We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clark, can you take the roll call?
Okay, Mr. Braun.
Present.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Ms. Pastner.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Seibacher.
Present.
Mr. Shiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
And Mr. Stone.
Present.
Eight council members present.
Yeah, Pastor Williamson's here, if I do our indication. Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful as we move into fall to have had a good summer. You've watched over our community and our city. Took our workers through some extreme heat at times. And now, Lord, the guard changes as we move into fall, autumn, and the harvest. For all of this, Lord, you are worthy of our thanks and our praise. For the community we live in and for the lives that we're all able to live. I pray, Lord, for those who continue to oversee the life's work of this community. And I would pray, Lord, within the city structure, for our mayor and councilpersons, administrators, and all of those clear down to the boots right on the ground that keep us moving forward and progressing as a community, day to day, week to week, year to year. I pray for this session tonight and for those, Lord, that will participate for discussions that surely will be held and if there's any decisions that are made here, that they are pleasing, Lord, first to you. I ask you to continue to bless, as a part of our city family, those who need your daily care and maintenance. That would include Chief Kofelt and Chief Myers, Mr. Moore, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, and any and all others within the city family who need your touch and blessing each day. We are thankful, Lord, for the nation that is our home. We pray for those who protect and defend our constitution and flag and keep America safe and free by day and by night, and as well in every community across America. We have police officers, firefighters, first responders, those that keep us secure, answer our calls, and help us in any way that we need them. For all of this, we are blessed. Guide and direct this session tonight and lead it, we pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. Attention, salute, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Pray the prayer. Okay, next order of business is comments from visitors. If you would like to speak to the council, we'd like to delimit it into five minutes, please, and just start with your name and address. It just feels like it sometimes.
For those that do not know me, my name is Beverly Gray. I have recently moved to East safety, Ms. Rose. Mr. Mayor and councilpersons, the reason I'm here tonight is I am requesting that you all place a yellow flashing caution light at the corner of Tenth and Wood Street similar to what is at Barkley School for the safety of the kids that go to Bush Elementary. At one time, some of you know, I was a school crossing guard. And twice, while I was there, children were almost hit by inattention motors. And you know, there was a time when we didn't have baby car seats or... Luckily, I remembered, and I saved a little girl from being run over by this, I'm gonna call it a Jeep-style black. At one time, all of the kids are in the crossing walk, this car goes speeding by, the older students scream, "Can't you read?" So my request is that the city place this caution light there. Several months ago, I was told this would cost approximately $4,000. And I think general revenue, surely, from what I've been reading on the front pages of the Fulton newspaper, we could come up with $4,000 for the safety of a child. A couple of times, had I not been there, the child grew in hit, possibly killed, injured for life, who knows? But I think any of my children, regardless of what you think of, is worth more than $4,000. And I just think for the safety of the kids, get into general revenue or whatever you have to do to get this light out there for the safety of the children. Numerous times, the police officers have stood there, but they kept me there every morning and every afternoon. People have... You're responsible for your actions, that's what you have to do. So that's my request tonight. I don't want to extend my five minutes. Please consider giving a caution light. Barkley, Long Island, put that one there. This is the city's responsibility. So that's what I'm asking you, to consider $4,000 for this light. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
We'll probably run that by the traffic commission and see what they have to say about that. Any other comments from visitors?
Yes, I almost want to do it from here.
That'd be fine. If you have trouble getting up, can we get a microphone to him somewhere?
Uh, I need to get up to play pictures.
Come on, Matt, give it to him.
My name is Patrick Paine. I live in the fourth ward. We'll talk a little bit about the parks and rec. Did you enjoy your visit to the Sausage Factory here tonight? The Sausage Factory is where we make...
Either one will work for you, Beth.
...legislation. Think you got a couple more visits scheduled to go there. You could be talking about what color golf balls to sell a tangled one. What you discuss is not why I'm interested. I'm interested in the process, that's why I come to these things, why I do come about once every three or four years. The highlight this time is your interaction on the salaries, where you came to a good concession. You haven't really made a decision until the budget, but you've come to a concession and agreement. I would like for you to use your imagination. Hopefully, the picture will zoom in. I'd like for you to pretend like you're in the best of all possible worlds. Everything there is possible. Some of the things are not practical, but they are possible. The things that are not practical, you can make possible. You have the remains of a small tree in front of you. In that pile of wood pulp, you will find a few pages on possible other funding sources or ideas for funding sources. What facilities might want to put in the park to make it usable before the baseball field gets done? Things you could do in the park before the baseball fields are done. And finally, a new map that shows how much area the baseball park is going to accomplish is going to take up. Just gives you a perspective on how big that thing is, that complex would be pride, small colleges and universities, mostly small universities. West Michigan has nothing like it, William Woods has nothing like it. William Woods has borrowed one of your fields for a softball field and built a fairly good baseball field at Baker. Read that pile of pulp. It's almost in English. You can take the paper out of the sheet protectors and make great airplanes. The city council has the power of the purse. The city council gives direction to the city staff. The people of Fulton have told you what they would like for you to do by passing a dedicated sales tax. You can only use that money for stormwater and parks and rec. There is no master plan in effect for parks and rec. It's totally your decision which way they go. There is a department-level plan that has been developed over a ten-plus-year period with staff input, citizen input, and outside expert input. In my opinion, that plan is well done. It is up to you to give the city staff direction of what to do and how. Remember to listen to the people of Fulton, to listen to the input of the city staff, and listen to each other. Only then they can inform the citizens. Remember, no matter what you decide, the sun will come up tomorrow. Anything you decide can be changed by you or the citizens of Fulton. Please read some of the chicken scratches on the pile of wood pulp. Remember, there's always more than one way of doing things. Now, I can get the pic... Picture number one is a picture. There's where you were supposed to be in your happy clothes.
Mr. Paine, I just want to give you a heads up, you have a minute remaining.
This is City Hall. This is... Hold it, it shows how much the park is gonna take up. And finally, if you can see it, down there on Water Tower, which you probably have seen, it says, "Brown Lake's early evening." Thank you for your time.
How much time we got, though?
Swept it in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paine.
Very good. We will look over your submissions to us there. Moving on, we've got, well, is there any other? I don't see any other visitors here. Consent agenda. Council members may choose to remove an item prior to discussing it for approval.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like to discuss or pull off of there?
Really quickly, just for anybody watching at home or on the streaming, we're approving the city council meeting minutes of August 27, the meeting minutes of September 17, the director of administration report for August, and an event request from Amy Conway for the YMCA Monster Dash on Saturday, October 26, and the approval of a request from Martha McGrath for the J.C.'s annual Christmas parade to be held Saturday, December 7 at 1:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see a reason to remove it, but in the administrative, director of administration's report, just a note and a congratulations to our golf pro at the golf course with an all-time record high, never, never, ever have you get $103,000 for a month. Great job to him.
Yeah, fantastic. Thank you for pointing that out. Very good. If there's no more discussion, I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. That will pass. And we have our financial report that Mrs. Horchlag will present for us. Can I hit the highlights?
I think this will be short and sweet. We have seven months of sales tax collections recorded. We are 1% ahead of the same period in the prior year. We had a very large amount of sales tax this month. I look for it to be much less the next couple of months.
I would like to point out that several towns across the state of Missouri are not keeping up with their sales tax that they've been collecting in past years, and the general thought process is the online shopping, is people are buying more online, not buying it locally and getting us the sales tax. So the fact that we're 1% ahead, I take that as very positive news for the community and the community shopping at home, and that we have a nice, strong retail base that's being able to take care of the citizens.
I would also draw your attention to the fact that August was a three payroll month. We only have two of those a year, so the expenses in every fund will be higher proportionately. Other than the fact that we bought a load of gas, aviation gas for the airport, it's about our biggest news this month. I've given you the financials, I've provided the notes. I'll answer any questions that anybody might have.
Go ahead.
Nope, go ahead, Ballard.
All right. On your first page, the general fund, if I'm reading this correctly, current year-to-date, we're, our expenses have exceeded revenue by $500,000?
That is correct.
So I assume...
We have revenues that do, I mean, our property tax does not hit the books until October.
Okay.
We have a month, if not two months, of sales tax that are accrued back after the end of the year. So it's never going to be equal to the percentage of the year that we're in right now.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we look at, on the operating statement, page four? Under the sewer department, there's two different areas that I'd like to ask about, and it's me learning, okay? I don't, I don't know what it is. It says in there, and I under, I went back and looked, and it's been there since January, transfer in cap, capital improvement, sales tax, for a million, a million...
That is a budgeted amount. We have not transferred that in. If you notice, it is not in the month-to-date nor year-to-date. I believe, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but I believe we budgeted that anticipating that the Rado lift station would cost us more, over a million dollars.
Okay.
I will tell you that we don't think it will. But the capital improvement sales tax is a restricted fund. Those monies can only be used for water or sewer capital improvements.
Okay. What is that percentage?
Half a percent.
Half a percent. Okay. And then down at the bottom, transfer in, and again, it's a budgetary thing because I went back and it's there since January. Down at the bottom, it says, "Transfer in from reserves." We transferred in another million dollars there.
Into the, a million into the sewer plant budgeted, and I believe that was to cover not only the Rado lift station, but dredging the pond, if I'm not mistaken. Neither one of which I believe we will have to do.
Well, we may do a portion of one to cover the extra that was dedicated to the resolution on the, for the INI that we approved last month. It's gonna be somewhere between two and $300,000, instead of a million.
Thank you for helping me understand that.
Motion to approve the financial report.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Solid waste, Kathy? We're a little bit above where we would normally be at this time of the year, just on straight percentages. I'm assuming that's because of the recycling costs? Is there, does the recycling cost go under solid waste?
Well, that, yes, but your expenses are up and so are your revenues. So, yes, I mean, we're...
My question is, are we okay in terms of that budget line item to continue to cover the increased cost of the recycling this year?
I would, I would hope so. I don't believe that the recycling costs have increased the last couple of months.
Well, ten times what it was.
I'm not denying that.
That's what I meant by the increase, is from where we budgeted last year.
But we're, you know, technically, if you go month by month, we're almost 67%, and they're at 70, so it's not that far off. It's not significant, shall we say.
Thank you, Kathy.
Very good. We had a motion...
Now motion to approve the financial report.
Thank you. I was just waiting. Very good. Are there any other questions for Kathy? If not, I'll fall for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Thank you, Kathy.
I think I have the stay-here sign. If I'm reading it right.
Very good. So next unfinished business, Parks and Rec Center financing. I don't see a handout.
There is not a handout.
As we said.
There is gonna be an update. We met with a couple of the local major banks last week, went through the scenario and the process, and they're looking at doing a 15-year. We talked about the money from utilities, and we talked about that lease purchase would be for $5 million. They still, they need to go, because of the size, they both need to go back to their respective total full boards. But like, I believe the little mini-executive board has given their preliminary nod of approval. It's gonna be probably about a two-month process.
Because it is tax-exempt financing.
Talk to, did you talk to Gilmore and Bell?
I called Gilmore and Bell, and, because they are bond counsel, and we have to retain their services for the tax-exempt piece of it. They told me that once the bank makes a decision, it's usually two months start to finish, or have to have an ordinance, it'll have to be read three times, et cetera. That will not delay the start of the project because we're planning on using the utility money first. So we'll go through that $4 million, and then we'll start construction draws. So we won't have to start paying the capitalized interest on the construction draws until, till we reach past that $4 million mark.
We established today that the doors will not open just due to the construction cycle. We're not anticipating them opening in 2020. It'll be very early 2021. But the, Kyle's on board, they're gonna be getting some of the soil analysis done here very shortly. Gonna be in close contact with the architects and the contract of the River City to get some of those preliminary meetings going. Is there anything you want to add, Kyle? No? Yes?
They are, the architect and...
Please, thank you.
All right, here, I better let you hold on to both sides.
Funny, funny. The architect, Clay, and the architect and engineering staff, along with River City, are, have a scheduled meeting on Thursday to talk about some of the value engineering opportunities that there may be in the project, so we can potentially save a few dollars there. So Clay has that arranged, and we're trying to get the architects to say, yes, this is, this is okay, and it won't affect maybe something else that they have some forethought into, so. Other than that, we're working on, we've got the notice of award, and the contractor's working on insurance and bonds and everything like that to get back to us, so we can get a contract signed. Pretty well it.
So, and I'm sorry, I don't know, did we not approve sometime back, and my mind just went blank on what the company was, where they did some core drilling and did the soil samples?
We did, they did preliminary core samples, preliminary, in district.
What Bill was talking about is during construction, the geotechnical engineering that's needed because of the clay soils that are over there. So, there's testing, and not only...
Continued throughout.
Right. Not only the soil, but concrete and all that kind of thing.
One thing that's gonna be required for the financing is we will have to do an appraisal, or an appraisal of the project will have to be completed. We're not concerned about that at all, since, Al, we're looking at a $5 million loan on a $9 million facility, so the appraisal should not be an issue. But it's gotta be done.
Have we paid off the architect, or do we still have money that we owe him, them? I don't know. Okay.
Because there was not a purchase order issued for that entire job, it was just an issue of purchase order. The architect will continue to be paid through the construction process.
Right.
Okay?
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other questions before we move on?
You can go, I was gonna tell Kyle's thing.
Kyle, thank you, Kathy.
So, moving on, we'll talk a little bit here about the Visu Sewer project.
We are, kinda like River City, we have issued the notice of award to Visu Sewer for that $500,000 that we went over last council meeting. Meanwhile, we've looked at the areas that we want them to work on. We discussed section eight, nine, and those kind of things, but we tried to, the ravine to Business 54 area, kind of from Second Street down to Collier, is the area that we've had most, I'm gonna say, the most density of backup issues. And looking at that area, we think them assessing that location along with just north of Second Street, say from Business 54, Market Street, St. Louis, up to 10th Street, kinda over to, over to State Street area, that combined will eat up about $500,000 worth. What they will do is come in and they will camera and assess the lengths of pipe all throughout that area, and then, and then we will get the video and get their assessment and get on the same page with them on what actually needs to be, needs to be fixed, and then we'll have a better idea of what, what the bottom number will be. So, but their first, their first part is coming in and assessing it. If it doesn't need to be lined, it'll be around a $3 per foot mark. If it does need to be lined, you're looking at $30 per foot, and then any services, where the services connect, that would be an extra amount if there's an issue there. There would be some grouting involved, and so that'll be an additional charge.
Clarification, Kyle? The $500,000 that was for the visualization and the repairs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Any questions?
Any, anyone that can show up?
No, not right now.
Okay.
One thing I've been thinking about, have we ever done a program with the city of Fulton that if we come across homeowners that have problems, we know they have problems, but they may not have the money to fix them, to issue a loan against the property?
We have not.
We have not. I know other cities have. I don't know if that'd be something we would wanna think about doing. Set aside, you know, $100,000 or $50,000 to, 'cause I know there's gonna be some people that, that we know will identify their problems, but they may not be able to fix them. Just a thought.
Right. And as a reminder, this project is really assessing the city's main, and, you know, if a homeowner has issues up into their property, that's, that is their... We're just trying to make sure that our main is not causing the problem.
When you're there in the area, will you camera the resident?
We will.
To identify what the issue is?
We will camera that connection point, and if we see a problem, we will let the homeowner know that they're, that what we've seen, and we can even go as far as sharing the video with them, but all we, all we'll be able to really tell is where that main and service connect. We'll be able to see if there's root, you know, root issue, or if there's, you know, gushing water into it.
Whether the connection's not even there.
Right.
Right.
Come on, where my thoughts going is maybe we, we make an agreement with, with Visu Sewer at a rate for those homeowners. Maybe they could be an hour's same rate. You know, like, if I called them personally as a resident and wanted them to do something, they're gonna quote me a price. Maybe we could, we could see if they could set us a price that while they're there, while they're in the area, they could do business with the homeowners. they could do business with the homeowner. That's their business, but maybe we could assist on getting a lower rate for them. Rather than getting into exchanging money and all of that.
Right now, we do not have a rate for a full repair of a service line.
I understand. I'm just saying maybe we could propose that to them and ask them to come up with a number.
See if they have a lining system for a foreign service line?
Sure.
Right, yeah.
Could be a win for them too.
Might save the homeowner a few bucks and then we kinda stay out of the middle of it.
Right. Okay, good thought.
Thank you, very good. Our next item will be the budget discussion. I know we're getting close.
Yeah.
Mr. Boone is going to hand out a preliminary draft of the...
Draft, draft?
Of the 2020, of the 2020 budget, including both operational and capital. I wanna, you're gonna get tired when you say the word draft, but these numbers are going to change.
Yeah.
Thank you. Right off the press.
Right off the press.
Wow.
They literally are.
They are, they're hot.
They're still warm.
I do not anticipate these numbers changing much. I don't anticipate anything in the capital budget changing. But as we go through and we do tweaks and we do massaging and we do clarifications and we do corrections, I don't want, when we hand out, when the budget is in your packet for the next council meeting, hopefully for first read at the next council meeting.
Wow.
The numbers are gonna be very close to what are in front of you, but there will be some changes. Some of the highlights, probably most notably, probably the two pages that mean the most to me is on Pages 15 and 16. We just refer to these as Pages 1 and 2, even though it's Pages 15 and 16. Pages 1 and 2 shows where we anticipate, in a perfect world, each of those budgets ending up at the end of the year. For 2020, based on the projections, we see the general fund having $112,000. The electric fund, $121,000. Gas and water, I wanna talk about those just a little bit. For a number of years, we have budgeted $88,000 to the Chamber of Commerce. That has been $17,400 a year from the electric, the gas, the water, wastewater and solid waste. But just due to needs, the gas fund and the water fund are very tight and very short. I eliminated that $17,400 from the gas and water fund and moved each of those $17,000 respectively to the electric and the wastewater fund. So as you look through the budget document when you get home, you'll see that the electric has like $34,000 and sewer has like $34,000 and I believe solid waste is still at 17. You will not see that number, you'll probably see a zero because it's, we've been budgeting that number. You will see a zero for that line in gas and water. So one thing that we were tweaking today, I see that the solid waste fund is $5,000 in the red. We will go in and we will make some corrections and looking at some modifications to the revenue line items and/or appropriate expenditure lines to get that number in the black. The only number we're not going to be able to justify getting in the black is gonna be the golf course. We've never budgeted the golf course in the black. You know, the new guy we got out there is doing an awfully good job. There's a chance that when we're sitting here a year looking at the 2021 budget based on the 2020 revenues, that we may be, maybe singing a different song and finally the golf course could maybe show a year in the black. The airport fund has received a lot of massaging and modifications in the last 24 hours as we have the correct number, as good of information as possible, numbers in there concerning the replacing and improving the real lights this year, that'll be done this year, and the remaining bit of the project for the new hangar construction taking place in 2020. So that, pretty much all the capital you see under airport will be for next year's bank of hangars. And we had an airport advisory board meeting this afternoon. You know, Kyle and some of his staff were there and Ballard was there. I don't know if he has anything he'd like to add to that. But if you look at the bottom of the first page, you're looking at $116,000 for most of the operational funds. If you look at Page 16, which is Page 2, there really is not a lot of things that we get to adjust or look at or budget on this page with the exception of the municipal garage. It's an internal service fund. I am very pleased, somewhat skeptical that the garage fund is in the black by the $2,000 to $5,000. That's usually much closer and much tighter. And we even have several thousand dollars of capital expenditure in the garage fund. So it's, I'm, like I said, I'm both pleased and skeptical. Overall, budgeted grand total, in a perfect world, at the end, we would have, you can see there in the bottom of Page 2, $137,000, better off at the end of 2020 than we project to be at the end of 2019. Are there any questions on those pages?
On the TIF, the South Business 54 TIF, does that have an expiration date on it?
It was 23-year TIFs. So 23 from '06 is...
29.
Am I anticipating that that debt will not be paid off? In which case the bondholders will be out if they made that investment. The city is not on the hook for that, we did not back those bonds. And there's a nice long story about city backing bonds with Dollar General that I'll share with anybody who's interested at a later time. But we have, when we backed them with Dollar General, we were younger and more naive and we had learned a lesson that we don't do that anymore, so we didn't back them with this one and probably a good thing. Just kind of generally overall, the one thing I'd like to point out is the city council approved raises that we decided on that one night, they are all included in here. All of those numbers are in the budget. The other number that I wanna just kinda point out, we, the transfer from utilities is up a little bit this year. I'll find it, it's Page 18. Right down there in the middle of your inter-fund transfers, you just, you see a line item, 01, 414, 1050, transfers in from utilities. We had been decreasing that number a little bit over time, but due to financial constraints and trying to keep the general fund in the black, that number has gone up from 2019. And if you look in the water, sewer, gas and electric, solid waste too, you will see line items that will go towards the transfer to the general fund. Are there any questions or do you just wanna, you wanna go over any of the major capital items? Most of them are pretty straightforward. The $1 million is budgeted in the Parks Department. The $4 million transfer from utilities to the general fund is included in the budget. The $5 million, well, I guess it's listed as a, it's in there. It's in there. So the rec center is fully in here. Even this morning, I was, this morning I was with Clay a little bit and kinda thought it might actually open or be completed in about September, but then we went back and looked at the documents and we were off on a number of construction days. I had asked Clay to put together a three-month budget, but then after we figured out it's not gonna open in 2020, it was like, okay, we're not gonna need a three-month budget. But that'll give us, so when we're sitting here a year from now, we will have another page in the document, the rec center revenues and expenditures. It's not necessary at this time. The one expenditure line item of $9 million is adequate. It's broad enough and big enough that anything that is an appropriate cost associated with that building can go into that line and get charged out to it. What else can I tell you?
I'll repeat my question again on the solid waste fund is that the fact that we're in the red on that line item, is it because of our expenditures of recycling or partially? Do we need to consider any type of increase in our solid waste charges to the residents to cover that cost? Why is that line item below zero, the $5,000?
We made an adjustment, oh, we put it, it was very much in the black. But here about three weeks ago, after we had put the budget together, the garage got ahold of me and one of our karate cans, the first karate can we bought probably seven or eight years ago.
Which is what?
Is...
What is that?
Oh, the karate can, that's the attachment that goes on the front of the front loader on the residential routes. It has the arm and dumps it in the container out front and then the whole container gets dumped in the back. That karate can is the whole attachment on the front of a front-loading trash collection truck as well as the controls. And just in the last two or three weeks, it's kinda halfway been determined that one of the karate cans is in very poor condition. To get it running again is gonna cost several thousand dollars. I believe we probably need to spend several thousand dollars to get it up and going again because it's about a $35,000 unit. If we can get it repaired and operational again for $3,000, it might last another five or six years, but we need to have an adequate number of, excuse me, an adequate number of operational karate cans so that the crew can do their job. And so we added that $35,000, I think as a, you'll see in the capital page, as a karate can, which took us from, I guess, $35,000 to the good, $30,000 to the good, to $5,000 to the red. And we just did that this morning.
But if we can get it repaired for three?
We're still gonna buy another one.
Okay.
Just to have it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any specific questions? Other than that, I'll just let you take it home. If you have any questions between now and then, if you want a little clarification or a little additional discussion on, feel free to give me a call. If you wanna just bring it up at the next council meeting so that everybody gets the answer and gets the question, I'd be glad to show it with you.
Well, Bill, I'll go ahead and ask the question now. These were questions I was gonna ask during council concerns. But there's questions that they've been asked before and they do affect the budget.
Okay.
There had been discussion at one time about the lack of the sidewalk from, on Business 54 from Westminster Avenue heading south towards Collier. That's the only section in town from Tractor Supply to Orson's that is not sidewalk. And I know there was discussion at one time, we were gonna try and pull it into the rest of the project, but it was gonna be too expensive, not the right time. And so the question is, have we been able to put any of that into next year's? Is any of that in the 2020 budget?
Not as a specific project. Do you believe it'd be possible to go for another grant for that? We applied and went to Ashland and pitched our case and some of the town got scored higher.
That particular grant is not up next year, it's every two years. So we were not awarded that grant last year. MODOT does have a cost share program potentially that we could, since it's on MODOT right away, we could potentially, we had a 50-50 split. We could look at other grants too to potentially make our overlay dollars go further.
I just, I repeatedly get that question because we have people that then end up in electric wheelchairs or such that are actually on the roadway between those sections. And then it had been brought up at one time about possibly putting in a bathroom at the dog park.
That was in this year's budget at $30,000. And the lowest bid we got was $130,000. So it's not, it's not gonna get done this year and it's not in next year's budget.
Not in next year's budget, okay. Thank you. Those are the two budget items.
Okay. Everybody good until next, feel free to call. Look it over and feel free, and we'll get that solid waste fixed. And other than fixing the solid waste, I think it's close to done.
Are we planning on doing a retreat on the budget prior to any readings?
That's up to the mayor and the council.
We can do that if everybody wants to. We can go down line by line as we've done in the past. Those are pretty lengthy. What's your all's feelings? Steve, you've been here longer than everybody.
I'd like to do it in a retreat.
Like Joe Friday, just the facts. The capital improvement and a few other things, not line by line.
Okay.
No, not line by line, but I think it would be beneficial.
I'd like to do it outside the council meeting.
Beneficial.
So we've got till the end of November to get the third reading, is that right?
Yes.
Do it next Tuesday, October 1st? Wow, because then the Tuesday after that, Tuesday after that could be first read, so.
I can do next Tuesday.
I mean, it's up to you guys, if you wanna do it.
What do you think?
I cannot do next Tuesday.
Try it.
I think it would be...
I mean, I would love to do it, I think there's a lot of good that comes out of it. But I cannot do next Tuesday.
Would it be beneficial for us to maybe come up with a couple dates that might work and send an email?
That would be good.
Next Wednesday?
We're doing something this second.
That's the allied tour.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that's gonna be...
During the day.
I think a couple dates would be great.
Madam clerk, does a retreat require any type of notice? How many days?
24 hours. Okay.
And it would be public, open to the public as well?
Of course.
I just, if it had to be a week, then we need to start making some decisions. So it sounds like we have opportunity to discuss this through email and set a date and then be able to get out of public notice.
Yep.
Very good, we'll get that out and try to...
Does anybody know any dates that they're not available other than next Tuesday?
November the 10th and 11th, 9, 10, 11. Way to pass it.
I just leave my Tuesdays open, the 2nd and the 4th.
Let's see, October.
How about that? Nobody's here right now.
October the tenth and eleventh.
I'm available any evening next week except for Friday.
Yeah, same, same here. Our city staff also, we have to be mindful of their time.
Right.
So.
I keep my calendar, but I don't keep my wife's calendar, so I need more time to figure this out.
Yeah, let's, let's get it out in the email and we'll, we'll hash it out.
That'll work, okay.
How many in the email is going to be for next Wednesday or Thursday?
Okay.
The second or third, to get it done before the next council meeting.
That would be, yes.
Before you, what is the, the oncology called that?
Pardon?
Recycle truck picking up, what did I call it?
Karate can?
Karate can. So is that the truck that picks mine up that's bad? Because I notice my green can is starting to have a little, something is rubbing the plastic up like a little-
Yes, sir.
Mine's getting, yeah, mine's too.
Mine's too, mine's getting really dirty. Starting to damage it.
Starting to save the can.
Yeah. Yeah. Cool. Why didn't you answer my question?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Robert, moving on for new business, I did have one thing. I was contacted, uh, by the Fulton High School about shooting off a couple fireworks after the Fulton scores at the homecoming game. I told them I'd be fine, so we'll get to see some fireworks coming up here. Sounds pretty cool. The next item, council concerns, I'll start to my right, Councilman Shiverdicker.
I'm good.
Councilman Moore, it's good to see you back, sir.
Well, thank you.
I have only two. I had a, one of Rick and our constituents says they called about sidewalk, and I told them we had a fifty-fifty, so is there any money left in, for citizens left in there?
Yes.
Okay, I'll let her know that then. And my second one was, I was absent last week, but I'm, the last council meeting, but I'm here. I had asked Mr. Clay about, and three months ago, about an outreach for five years, what they was going to do in the other facilities in the park, and I just want to remind him I'm still waiting for it because I had concerns about that project that we're working on, but it's passed and we're going to build it, but I still would like to see what he's going to do in the next five years in the older parks. And that's my two.
Very good. Councilwoman Pastner?
Um, I just want to say thank you to all the city workers at Monmouth Sixth Street and cleaned up that area of concern. It's been a long time coming and I know a lot of citizens are very happy to see some progress.
Very good.
Yep, that was great, although he's starting to drag stuff back out.
I know, I know. Yeah.
Councilman Braun?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilman Stone?
I actually have a handful of things, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll go through them quickly. Um, I had mentioned a couple of the, the budget items that had been talked about before, but there, I had a constituent that brought up the, and not, maybe an opportunity for a sidewalk on Washington Street, and that actually is the division between Ward Two and Ward Three. And there's a lot of children on that street currently, and they're walking up and down the roadway for school buses and various activities. And so there was just an interest from the neighborhood to possibly have a sidewalk on Washington Street that would stretch from, I guess that would be Chestnut to Reed. And then additionally, um, I know at one time a couple of constituents came to me about possibly putting in a splash pad at Carver Park. I don't know if that's something that's in the current budget or if it's anything that we could at least look at for maybe 2021. That way, let's talk about it, see where it might fall into the master plan for Parks and Rec. That way we can at least give an answer when the constituents ask. Um, the, the flashing lights that we had Ms. Gray mention, I want to remind the council, I was, I was actually at Bartley on the PTO at the time that that was done. That was a Bartley student project. The, the students of Bartley came and they were sponsored by the PTO. They raised the funds, their fundraising, they worked with MoDOT on the sign placement, and I believe the city's responsibility was simply to continue to provide continuous power to those.
You are correct.
So that project, it would be a great project to repeat again at Bush School, but maybe it's something that we could talk to the Bush PTO about, or that community could go to their PTO, make it a student project, or even an Eagle Scout project. There would be an excellent Eagle Scout project that we could take. Speaking of Eagle Scout projects, I have an Eagle Scout that is interested in taking on the project of the ash bor tree treatment and identification. Uh, they notified me today that they would like to do that, they'd like to do something towards that project. We brought it up here as a council and determined it wasn't something that we could financially absorb into this year's budget because of the cost of it. Um, and what I told them is that I would mention that here and that then I would get Parks and Rec involved and maybe we could sit down and have a representative from Parks and Rec and the scout and they could scope out the project because there's, there's, there's many pieces of that. It's you have to identify all the trees and then figure out the treatment. That stuff, so it, it may, to do everything might be more than a single Eagle Scout project would be, but we can at least scope it out. And then that Eagle Scout would come to it, that, that candidate for Eagle Scout would come to it and present to the council on his project that he would want to do. But that was, that, that fishing expedition of mine to get somebody to, to, to hook on that worked. Um, and then the last item that I have is I've had two constituents within Ward Two send me emails in the last two weeks, and I don't know if other council members have received them, and it's, it's about the 5G micro cell-
Yeah.
-hereby, you're, you're liable and, and all of that.
Right, I've received it.
And so I will be forwarding them to the-
We've received them.
That was, did you, yeah, I did see that.
And any of those I will forward to the Director of Administration for appropriate response.
Right.
Thank you.
I've got them, but I'm not sure they're from-
That's what I was wondering.
I don't know if they're from-
I'm kind of afraid, yeah.
I was going to actually reach out to the, the, the person listed to see if it was real or not, but I felt like we needed, it needed to be a city response, so.
I have actually responded to both of those-
Oh, have you?
-individuals and, you know, said, I'm happy to set you up with the mayor or the director or anything I can do to help you out with that, to get you with these guys. Um, and they never-
Nothing.
-ever responded to that. So it kind of seems like one of those, uh, got word, who's been signing a petition and it sends it out.
Oh, it sends the audit.
It kind of seems like something similar to that.
That's what I was kind of wondering.
I don't, it's kind of hard to-
Well, then, then I guess, I, I will forward, and I guess the advice is to forward any emails we receive to the county or to the city clerk and let her distribute them.
It's one of those guys.
Let her handle it.
Or did you hear what, did you hear what I said?
What's that?
Delete them.
Yeah.
You can do that too.
I, I, I felt like they needed some sort of response, but it wasn't going to come from me.
I get them all the time, I'm telling you. It's crazy.
Seems like we give more right after MML.
Yes, we sure have. They have our cards.
The only two I've received, I've received after, maybe there was a timing there.
You put your business card in one of those-
Yeah, and there you go.
Tubbs and you just became part of it.
Sure, yeah.
Just give you a heads up, I didn't, I didn't go to MML and I got them too, so.
Okay, so that's not it.
And then the MML.
Mr. Mayor, when Jeff gets done, if I could come back, I'd do one.
I'm done, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, yeah, we'll skip back. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I would just like to ask Bill and, and the mayor and whoever else, do we have, and this is an MML thing that I, that I sat in a class on, a comprehensive plan for the city, updated comprehensive plan?
No. I believe the last one was done about year two thousand.
Okay. Is that something that we can certainly look at trying to move forward with on getting that done? We're talking budget now. I think it would be a very appropriate thing to move forward with a comprehensive plan for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Braun. It was on my list, but I felt like I was getting long on it, so I did bring it up tonight. I'm going to bring it up at the next meeting, so thank you.
I will, um, I will go, I will do some research on that for you and we'll bring some information back. It is, it is not an easy process. It is a very lengthy process and it is quite expensive to do a city comprehensive plan. Just, I'm going to guess it's going to be at least forty thousand dollars and it could be much more than that. But we, I will, I will do some research to find out what some other towns have, who they've used and what they've, what they've spent in the last couple of years and bring that back to you.
And, and part of, part of why I asked that question, I, I, as we get more legally involved, as the world is going, they mentioned a whole lot about our liabilities for not having one. And I think that's, that's why I feel like it's important.
And that note I had was how that comprehensive plan should drive your zoning code, is the phrase that I pulled from that meeting on-
Correct.
... particular session as well.
Mr. Johnson, uh, I guess because I've been around longer, those are all fine and they are expensive, but the problem was the last one we did, they didn't want to take the advice of it. You know, Fifty-four should be all commercial according to our last plan, but, oh, I don't want to do that. So think about it before you spend the money, are you going to follow what you end up getting out of it? That's my only comment.
Nineteen years we, we haven't had one, and I think it's important that we do move forward with one.
Only if you're going to follow it.
Well, I'd be happy to.
The bucks are-
I would be more than happy to, Mr. Moore. We do have to listen to the constituents.
Very good.
Mr. Clue?
Oh, well, are you that?
We're still on council concerns.
I have one little thing, yeah, and I think I've already mentioned to Courtney, we have a sign, Courtney, did we, did we get that, did we make the sign as you come out of Walmart?
I mentioned that.
Thank you.
Um, I don't know.
The sign looks like a kindergarten, you made it with crayon, with, with crayon. As, the four-way stop as you come out of Walmart, you look up and it says North Bluff, and it's, it's so weathered that it looks like it's been on chalk. Could we replace that sign, it really looks-
Kyle's probably making a note of that.
I mentioned that to Kyle and Dennis after last week's meeting, so thank you.
A long time, Phil. That was my one. Thank you very much.
Councilman Simmons?
Well, after John said his piece out of order, I don't have anything. Thank you, John.
I, I'm sorry, I-
That's okay.
My mind went, my mind went blank when I said I had nothing and I-
No, I was going to repeat what he said, but other than that, I don't have anything.
Very good. Councilwoman Seaborn?
Uh, no concerns, I just wanted to echo what Lindsay said and thank our city crews for the work that they did on Sixth Street. It's not in my ward, but I got a lot of communication about that and I know folks were really thankful, so I know we're all very appreciative. That's all I had.
Very good. Okay, moving on to resolutions. Councilwoman Reclu, if you would present thirty-three fifty-six for us?
Yes. And actually, it is-
Make a motion to remove thirty-six, thirty-three fifty-six from the table.
Second.
Who wasn't paying attention there? Sorry about that. So I have a motion and a second to remove thirty-three fifty-six. Is there any discussion on that?
I would kind of like to, I would like to see it continue down the road in giving Clay some time to continue to work on other options for it.
Alternative financing.
Right.
Alternative plans.
And again, this is just to bring it off the table, so, but there's-
Questioned, you just bringing it off the table and can you find alternative back financing by leaving it on the table?
Absolutely.
If we-
If we leave it on the table.
You're going to take it from the table and retable it.
Okay.
Yeah, you can retable it.
Sorry, I was out of line then.
The other thing that, that Clay and I had kind of talked about a little bit today, I'm not advocating that the bill die or anything like that.
No.
We can definitely bring it back as a new resolution as well, should you choose to let it stay on the table or should you vote it down? Um, I guess my question would be how far down the road are you headed? Because I think every meeting from here on out, we want to keep-
Keep tabling and- Backing on, yeah, I see.
Well, I certainly, it has a bid expiration on it and I thought it was the end of October. Kyle, is that right? Clay?
I have a paper on my mind, but they have sixty days on the one month that, you know-
October.
I, I, I made a note last week, October twenty-seventh is when it goes, when the bid goes.
So if you guys want to keep it in motion, you can definitely take it off the table tonight and retable it. You can do that again next time too. If you want to take it out until the end of October, we'll leave that to whatever you want to do.
And we've got, our next meeting is October fourth, is that right?
Eight.
Eight.
Eight, okay.
Eighth and then the twenty-
So how do you want to do it?
Fourth.
Would it be beneficial, Clay, at all to give you more time to come up with the alternatives other than this bid of a process to move some dirt?
Yeah.
I mean, if it's not going to benefit us, it's just either-
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I haven't done any work on it yet because I-
Right, I know you've been busy.
Yeah, and the message I got, I thought last council meeting was that we wanted to talk about the financing for the community center and then move on to the baseball complex.
Okay.
Um, I, I can have something at the next meeting if that's what the council wishes.
So?
Yes.
So that being the case, we-
Take it off the table and put it back on?
Or leave it on. How are we voting on this?
Right, so if you leave it on the table, it's going to die. So we, we have a motion and a second to remove it from the table, and then we normally would have had the conversation that we just had, but it's okay. So I would say let's, let's go ahead and vote to take it off the table, and then if you want to retable it, you can do that.
Okay.
Very good. So I have a motion and a second to bring this off the table. Any more questions? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
No.
Very good. That was seven to one. Councilman Moore?
Yeah.
Um, so that's off the table now.
Make a motion to table Resolution Thirty-three fifty-six.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion on this? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
No.
So why don't we-
I'm voting against myself, I know that, but it's a reason.
Okay, yeah, because it has to stay off our, yeah. Okay.
Moving on to ordinances, first readings, Councilwoman Pastner, if you would amend Fifteen fifty-nine.
Bill number fifteen fifty-nine and ordinance amending section eighteen dash thirty-three amendments Fulton City Code by amending the automatic sprinkler system requirement set forth in section nine zero three dot two dot one dot two, group A dash two of the two thousand fifteen international building code. Make a motion that we advance this for second reading at our next council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
So what I'm requesting here is to raise the occupancy load limit on just a A-two assembly, occupancy class, which would include restaurants, bars, cafes, of that type, anything that has food or beverage. And what, I've had a couple inquiries about different buildings in the city that are vacant and, um, the, a lot of the emphasis is on the building's downtime is because the infrastructure wasn't designed in the ground and it's very costly to get the water through the building. So I've been talking with Chief Kofelt about other alternatives that we can do, adding another exit access, fire detection systems, things that are less costly for the property owner, business owner, because some of the, you know, the, putting the sprinkler system Because some of the, you know, the, putting the sprinkler system in an existing building can sometimes cost as much as the building. So Columbia, I've talked with an architect that I'm working with now on a project here in Fulton. Columbia did it back in, I believe, 2000, from 2000 to 2003, when they went to, they changed it from 300 down to 100, and they were having the same issue with existing buildings.
So based on that statement, is taking it to 200 the right number?
That's what they, that's what they took it to. They took it to 200. And they've had it there for a while now. So it seems to be working with it. And the way the occupancy load is figured, you know, if you have, say you have tables and chairs, and it's a, so you're allowed 15 square feet per occupant, so a 1,500-square-foot building, you're at 100 right there. You might only have six tables with four chairs, and plan on 24 people, but it's not based on that. It's based on the fire area.
Hmm, that seems like 15 square foot per person.
Well, that's with the...
Yeah, but that, I mean, that's it.
Well, I mean, if you have fixed seating, it goes down to 7 square foot per person, and then if you have a, standing room is five. So, you know, depending on what seating you have, you could hit that 100 pretty quick.
Could we hear from Chief Kofelt, too, concerning this?
Kevin, do you have any concerns with doing this?
I don't know, I don't know, sir.
Like Dennis said, there's other options. The smoke detector systems that they have now are pretty effective, and another means of egress are other ways that we had talked about. And it just keep from killing a deal that might bring in a retail business. Is the goal here, is to kind of promote business, still be safe.
That's what Mike was saying.
We're not looking to open the doors to allow them to do anything. I mean, there's still other requirements, but in the A2 occupancy, all of the other assembly occupancies are 300 or 12,000 square foot. It's just the A2 that deals with food and beverage that limits it down to 5,000 square foot or 100 occupants.
Are we setting ourselves up, though, if we do? Change that to where, is it going to be, I don't know, when it comes to fire and people and cooking and...
If, and my thought on that, if it was residential, where people were sleeping, I wouldn't even approach you on this, but this is an assembly where people are alert, they're awake, you know, they're not going to be sleeping, so they're going to be alert.
How many, how many places in town right now would fall under the 200?
I mean, I haven't, I haven't, you know, done, it's kind of hard, because I'd have to do the square footage and the occupancy load, you know, but a lot of the buildings downtown, the size, most of them are similar, and a lot of them would fall in that. You know, we have a couple, a couple empty restaurants, not downtown, that would probably fall into this.
The old Hardy's building, or...
And I can't say whether that's sprinkled or not. I know it has suppression in the kitchen, but I don't know if the rest of the restaurant is or not. I'm probably going to say, no, it's not, because it would have fell under the 300 back in 2000, because we went from the 2000 to the 2006, and from 2000 to 2006, it went down to 100. So I'm going to say it's probably not sprinkled.
So does, the, does the kitchen have a separate requirement for fire protection?
It depends on the type of equipment in the kitchen.
Okay, but this would not affect that?
Okay. The kitchen will still have to have its own fire suppression system.
There.
Like I said, it depends on, you know, the kitchen, if it's a Type 1 or Type 2.
Right, right.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions or comments on this? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? All right, that passes for second reading. And speaking of second reading, we'll move on. Councilman Braun, if you would present 1556?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, too, I'd like to do it the second, the third reading tonight on this, please.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, Bill number 1556, an ordinance to elect to have violations of the municipal ordinance, ordinances of the city of Fulton, Missouri, heard and determined by the Associate Circuit Judge of Callaway County, Missouri, in repealing Sections 38-1, 38-3, 38-4, and 38-5 of the Fulton City Code.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Does everyone...
That's quick.
Everybody asleep on that one.
Yeah, that's where we were going, so we're good.
Oh.
You made that one.
I make a motion for the reading tonight. I get it now, I'm sorry. I said I was going to do it.
Very good.
Thank you, Val.
Leave some coffee up here, please.
We were going with the flow.
Yeah, please, kind of, yeah.
Okay, so I do have a motion and a second. Does everyone understand what this is?
Yes.
Stephen, you weren't here, but yeah.
Yeah.
Very good.
And I'd like to say, at the last meeting, I neglected to point out that I want to thank Heather, she's our municipal court clerk, she has made amazing strides in the two years and she's put a lot of hard work into our municipal court, and so it's a bittersweet thing, it's really unfortunate that we're going to be moving on the circuit, but it's been the best in the city, it's the appropriate move for us to make. But I do definitely want to just extend my sincere gratefulness for all of the work she's put into this, and this is of absolutely no reflection on her or the city.
And we're going to be right by her, by my understanding, yeah.
Thank you, Courtney. Very good, so I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? And we're going to hear again?
I'm going to try it again. Bill number 1556, an ordinance to elect to have violations of the municipal ordinance of the city of Fulton, Missouri, heard and determined by an Associate Circuit Judge of Callaway County, Missouri, in repealing Sections 38-1, 38-3, 38-4, and 38-5 of the Fulton City Code. I make a motion to pass Bill 1556 tonight.
Second.
Can't get it out.
A rough night. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? You've heard the bill read three times, at this time, we would like Madam Clerk to take final roll call.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Paesnuck?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
And Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Bill 1556 passes. Moving on, Councilman Simmons, if you would do 1557?
Yes, sir. Bill number 1557, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Reinhold Electric, Incorporated of St. Louis, Missouri, to provide runway and identifier lights real at Elton Hensley Memorial Airport, and to sign all necessary documents in relation to the state block agreement pertaining to this project. I make a motion that we approve the second reading and advance this to third and final reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or updates, changes to this little, not little project, but... Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? That passes to the third reading, if you would.
Bill number 1557, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Reinhold Electric, Incorporated of St. Louis, Missouri, to provide runway and identifier lights real at Elton Hensley Memorial Airport, and to sign all necessary documents in relation to the state block agreement pertaining to this project. I make a motion that we approve the third reading of Bill 1557 at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions on this, more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? You've heard third reading, it's now time for Madam Clerk to read roll call for a final vote.
Okay, Ms. Paesnuck?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Bill 1557 passes. And moving on, Councilman Stone, if you present 1558?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1558, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with JAVIATION to develop a project plan and development for additional box hangers at Elton Hensley Memorial Airport, and to sign all necessary documents in relation to state block agreement, project number 19-040A-2. I move this for third and final reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? And if you would...
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1558, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with JAVIATION to develop a project plan and development for additional box hangers at Elton Hensley Memorial Airport, and to sign all necessary documents in relation to state block agreement, project number 19-040A-2. I move this for final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? You've heard it read three times, it's now time to take final vote by roll call.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Ms. Paesnuck?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Very good, Bill 1558 passes. Final thing here, we've got a couple of announcements. The next meeting of the city council will be held October 8th. A work session will commence at 6:30, a regular session to follow at 7:00. The city of Marshall will host the MML Central Division meeting on Wednesday, October 16th at 6:00 PM.